All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, meeting adjourned. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Golems?
Present.
Here.
They can't hear you.
Mrs. Boland?
Here.
Mr. Carlin?
Here.
Dr. Flowers?
Present.
Mrs. Gaines?
Present.
And Mrs. Sylvia?
Here.
Okay, and we'll have Mrs. Boland will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Yep, we now have our moment of silence. Please keep the following individuals who have passed away in your thoughts and prayers. Mary Alice Raymond, mother-in-law of Elizabeth Gibbs, grade seven teacher at TMS. John Jennings, brother-in-law of Catherine Jennings, school secretary at Pell. Catherine Lamont, aunt of Arthur Bell, PE teacher at TMS. And Elizabeth Ladner, grandmother of Justin Buffman, grade eight teacher at TMS. Moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Gaines.
I'd like to move to amend the agenda. Moving 2.1, 3.1, 4.1, and 5.1 to the beginning of the meeting, and eliminating from the consent agenda, 7D2 and 7F1.
Second.
So, I think we just need one correction to that, and I think it's, you started with 2.1. I believe you want to move 3.1, 4.1, and 5.1 before 2.
Before 2.1.
Before 2.1, and I believe on the consent agenda amendment, it would be 7.2D.
Two.
D2 and F1.
Right.
Okay.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Mrs. Boland, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. So we'll move on to 3.1. Item 3.1 is a student council update, and I believe Ben Pratt.
He's here.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
You can sit right up here, Ben, right next to Mrs. Boland, there's a spot for you. Whenever you're ready, go right ahead, Ben.
For our fall sports teams, football traveled to Providence and beat classical on Saturday to improve to 2-2, and they're fourth in Division 2A. Boys soccer beat Juanita Sanchez last week to improve to 2-6. Girls soccer tied with Blackstone Valley Prep in our 5-3-1. Girls tennis beat Central last week to improve to 7-3. Girls volleyball beat Narragansett to improve to 6-2, and they are currently second in their division. Boys cross country split their last meet with one win and one loss. They and the girls team have two upcoming invitationals for their championships. This week is Spear Week at Rogers. The homecoming game is Friday night at 7:00 at Topa, and they host East Greenwich, who's in first place. The homecoming dance will be Saturday night at Rogers. Auditions for the winter play, A Christmas Carol, take place tomorrow after school in the auditorium. This past Saturday, over 70 students from across the state took the SATs at Rogers. Scores are expected back towards the end of this month. The next SAT will take place on November 3rd, and PSATs for juniors will take place tomorrow during school. The end of the first quarter is November 9th, and to end, the senior class had a car wash yesterday and raised over $400 to help pay for senior prom this spring.
Okay, thanks, Ben. We'll now move on to 4.1, is recognition this evening of Eliza Taylor. Eliza was a silver medalist in the Skills USA National Championship. She's a NAC Tech student in the AIOT program, and she received a silver medal in technical computing application. So Eliza's here, come on up and we'll present the certificate to you. Great job.
Eliza, do you want to speak too? No? Not really? Okay.
All right, Mr. Chair, I just want to emphasize, this is number two in the country. In the country. Nice job, Eliza.
Wow.
Next item is 4.1, that was 4.1, next item is 5.1, which is the Newport Experience, who will have a presentation, and I believe Dr. Bean is going to give us the introduction for this as the kids get set up and are ready to do this presentation.
So as I mentioned last month, our goal each month is to have a presentation or two to highlight some of the incredible programs and initiatives that are going on in Newport. And we're thrilled that our Fab Newport, Newport Experience team, group can be here tonight. I'd like to introduce Chris Gross, and he's going to be leading the presentation. The Newport Experience overview is a connection of community connections, career pathways, student engagement, health and wellness, and family involvement. So, welcome to everyone, I'm glad you're back.
Hi, everybody. Well, first of all, thank you for having us. We had an unbelievable summer. My name is Chris Gross, and I am a community coach for Fab Newport. We are in the Florence Gray Center in the North End, and we are a maker space. But we, even more than that, we specialize in creating the conditions to help kids feel comfortable and learn about their interests, their talents, and most of all, to connect them to their community and empower them to make their lives. So the Newport Experience is a three-year program funded by the Van Buren Foundation and Frederick Henry Prince Memorial Fund at Newport Hospital. And it's supported by our great partners at Bike Newport, Newport Public Schools, Salve Regina University, and Newport's Health Equity Zone. So, we had 20 students over the summer and four staff members, and most of them are behind me here, ages 11 to 15. 18 of them were from the Health Equity Zone, so the North End and the Upper Broadway. And what I loved is the wide, wide variety of personalities, interests, and backgrounds, because that's what makes life interesting and awesome. And so six of the students were paid through EBCAP Summer Youth Workforce Program, and the whole idea was to just get them out and active. And a whole lot of learning comes through just adventure. You know, there's not really a curriculum needed, because I, at Fab Newport, we believe that relationships are at the heart of learning. So relationships with each other, relationships with adult mentors, and relationships with the greater community. So in six weeks with bikes provided through Bike Newport, we biked over 100 miles around Newport, visiting businesses, taking tours, and connecting to its great people and opportunities. Some of these include the International Tennis Hall of Fame, Newport Boys and Girls Club, Martin Luther King Community Center, the Career Academy at NAC Tech, the Marriott Hotel, Northside Community Market, among many others. And most importantly, nine of these students now serve as a volunteer or intern for some of these community partners, mainly through family connections and as a result of our trips as well. And I don't really want to take too much more time than that, because really, the real reason why this summer was so incredible was because of the people behind me. Kids learn so much from each other, and really, if more focus is just putting on the environment to allow that to happen, beautiful things can occur. So without further ado, here are some of these young people, so let's welcome them.
Hi, my name is Kaylee, and I was very glad to be a part of the Newport Experience. And my favorite part of this summer was making a table and taking it home, and now I get to use it.
Hello, my name is Everett Price, and my favorite highlight of the Newport Experience was the Anex comics. And that's why, and the reason why it was my highlight, because I could just share my experiences, and plus it was the first job that I had. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Martin, and my favorite part about the Newport Experience was going to Salve and seeing the campus, and that's about it.
All right. Hi, my name is Jaden, and my highlight over the summer with the Fab Newport Experience is playing sports and games with my friends. That is my, and also, the reason I like doing it is because the outcome, or it'd be, you know, sorry. That's my highlights.
Hi, my name is Kevin, and I was a part of the Newport Experience. My highlight of the summer is swimming, and it was a good part of the summer for me, and I enjoyed it.
Hello, my name's Autumn, and my favorite part of the summer was the community dinner, because we got to share our highlights of the summer, meet new people, and play some games, and have some delicious food. And that's my favorite part of the summer.
Hi, my name is Lacey Brown, and my highlight over the summer was getting to meet so many new people and getting to bike with them. And then eventually, I got to learn a lot of new things about Newport that I didn't know before.
And before we talk about moving forward a little bit, I don't want to put Abby on the spot, but another Fab Newport staff member that was an integral part of this summer is Abby, so I'm wondering, do you want to share a highlight?
Hey, my name's Abby, I helped run the Newport Experience, and one of my highlights was watching the students overcome their fears as we went swimming off of the pier. They were really scared when we first got there, but by the end of it, we were all swimming off of it and having a great time.
So, moving forward, you know, with this program, we hope to continue working with these amazing young people, because belonging to a cohesive group is so powerful, because it teaches you about yourself, how you fit in a group, what your strengths are, and it gives people the courage to try new things, and, you know, that's what life's about. Trying new things, expanding yourself each and every day, and we hope to play a role in this group's lives, but then also, you know, the greater Newport as well, because without a doubt, the greatest part of Newport are its people. So it's its greatest resource, so we would be foolish to not leverage that. So thank you very much for listening, and yeah, thanks for having us.
Thank you. So thank you to all the students, and thanks for taking the time out tonight to share your experiences with us. It's, we're glad you got to do that this summer. So the next item on the agenda would be, back to 2.1, would be public comment. Mrs. Nash, is there anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, we have Devin O'Brien.
Good evening, Devin O'Brien, 2-3 Sergeant Greenway, you know the drill. First, thanks for the check, really appreciate it. But there's one thing I really don't appreciate, and it's the fact that month, meeting after meeting, the school committee refuses to discuss the issue of Rogers High School. Now I know what you're going to say, you're going to say to wait until the bond vote, but it's still an important issue, and it's not any less important now than it will be after November. So, yeah, and disappointed in the fact that this was not discussed during the last school committee meeting. I'm enraged, this is not on the agenda for this meeting, and this is an issue that really should be cared more about by the school committee. Thank you.
That's it, Mrs. Nash?
Anyone signed up?
Okay. Moving on from public comment, the next item on the agenda would be 5.2. It's a Rogers High School update on advisory, and I believe Mr. Vance is going to present that to us this evening.
So I'm Jared Vance, I'm the principal at Rogers High School. I just want to talk about, a little bit, about two initiatives that we've taken on this school year. One with CREW, and the other one with the Chromebook Initiative with our class of 2022. So I drew the short straw and had to present earlier in the year, you know, so being a year, a month into this work with implementing with students, it's more about what the plan is moving forward than like the results, because all of these things that I'm going to talk about take time to build capacity and buy-in, and to show their impact. But in the end, like it says on the first slide, these things will be major game changers for Rogers around culture and instruction. So CREW. CREW is the rebranding of advisory at the high school, you know, so we're not using the term advisory anymore, it's CREW, because we don't want people thinking about what advisory was in the years past, but what it is in the present state and the new things that we're doing inside of CREW. So CREW is not a relation, CREW is a relationship to be nurtured, not a curriculum to be covered. So some of the work that we did over the summertime was looking at are there formalized curriculums that we need to use in our CREW period, and that's not really the case. So the idea is, we have a nine-minute check-in. Yeah, we have a nine-minute check-in days one through five, and that's a short window of time. But in nine minutes, we've had training over the summertime where there are activities and things that are in place that allow for authentic conversation between staff and students. You know, one of the things that we keep hearing over and over again is that we need to have a better connection with our kids, and so that they have somebody that they can go to in the building for support, or if they need help, or just somebody to talk to. You know, it's one of those things where it impacts so many different aspects of the educational environment, whether it's attendance, engagement, you know, all of those kind of larger things that we hear about as being issues. This is a way for us to tap into building relationships and try and address those. When kids feel connected to school, they're more apt to come, they're more apt to engage, they're less than likely to behave negatively. So what we've done is we have the nine minutes every five, days one through five. On day six, we have a 39-minute, so the activities are a little richer and a little more engaging. You know, some of the pieces around like graduation and school-based activities will get pushed in through that 39-minute block, but that nine-minute check-in is really about making connections. You know, so there's one teacher to 12 students, you know, there might be 13 and a couple, but we're trying to keep those ratios down, and every teacher in the building has a CREW. So the vision for CREW, so Rogers High School CREW focuses on the development of the whole child, on building relationships and creating a safe, supportive, and caring school community. We do this by dedicating time to intentional small group experiences that foster relationships between advisors and advisees, and promotes a growth mindset. We commit to knowing all students well and to creating a sense of belonging within our school community. The specific purposes for CREW are to create opportunities for student voice and engagement, to develop self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making, and to learn through play and explore group dynamics. So some of the things that we've done in the beginning of the year have really been around setting the vision for Rogers moving forward. So people that were at open house saw hangings of the student, or the vision of the graduate, where kids, they outlined a person and then wrote in different skills and traits that they want to see from kids that graduate from Rogers. And for the most part, it's not about content and curriculum, it's about who those kids are as people. You know, what kind of grit do they have, what kind of passions do they bring to the table, how good are they as a person? And so those are really kind of the characteristics that travel through, you know, a person's lifetime. It's not necessarily about, do I know math, science, social studies, but what are those skills that are embedded? So we've modeled some of this with our faculty, and so then they get experience with it and then implement it into the classroom during CREW. And so we're only, you know, a month in, people are building capacity and comfort. We have a lot of CREWs that are really engaged and having great conversation, and as the school year moves forward, we're looking to make sure that everybody's at that same place. So to move on to our one-to-one Chromebook Initiative, which is the next piece, is at the present time, all ninth graders receive the Chromebook in August. And for those that weren't able to pick them up at that distribution night, we've been able to tap into each one of those students and provide a Chromebook for them. They each have a specific one that's assigned, they get to have it with them all day, they get to take it home, and then to keep it safe, we provided a case and a backpack for every freshman. So really what this does is it breaks down the walls of the traditional educational environment. So we've been able to personalize for our students. And what we mean by that is the pace, the choice, the product, the location of how education takes place. You know, with any kind of initiative, particularly around technology, the device is the easy part, the instructional practices are the things that take a little bit longer. So right now, it's really about delivering and receiving assignments, but as we move forward, it's going to be around shifting that dynamic to the instructional practice. You know, some of the platforms, because we have the technologies that we have access to, are Summit, Odyssey Ware, Albert for our AP students, Career Cruising for our ILPs, Virtual High School, Achieve 3000, Google Classroom, G Suite, Remind, IXL, Khan Academy, and then the access to social media. One of the great things about technology is it allows our students to reach past the four walls of the classroom, right? So they can connect with the most current researchers in the field, people that are right on the cutting edge of information, they can collaborate with their peers without having to be in the same space. It just, you know, it just multiplies the impact of the educational environment by not having everything housed in a typical classroom. So, do you guys have any questions?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question about advisory. Does your schedule?
CREW?
Yeah, advisory, yeah, CREW. Does your schedule and the vice principal's schedule allow you to get around so that you can be part of these CREWs at all?
Yeah, so we've been trying to rotate through the building just to kind of monitor what's happening. We're not looking to jump right into CREW, those CREW periods, because we're trying to have staff build those relationships first, but it does give us some flexibility.
Second question. Are you finding that the attendance is up during CREW, or they, because I know that that was an issue, you made it second period, right, so that, is that where you take attendance also?
It is, it is. So right now, our rates are fluctuating, they're going up and down, but those are things that will get addressed through the CREW period.
Okay, no, I was just concerned, you know, about students, you know, and attendance and, you know, coming for parts of the day and leaving during other parts of the day, just, you know, observations that have been made about really needing to maybe tighten up on, you know, kids leaving school. That'll come later in the discussion when we discuss the aides.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Principal Vance, I have three questions for you. First of all, is this CREW timeframe, time period, taking away from any traditional learning? Is it stealing or taking, again, time away from science classes, English classes, social studies? Any of the six core Rhode Island Department of Education required classes? Is it taking any time away from them?
So on the days one through five, our length of period is the same as it was last year. On days six, there's a little more time shaved off from each period to build that 39-minute block. So every six days, it takes away maybe five minutes from each period.
So it is taking away time?
On that sixth day.
Okay, do you have an approximate time?
Yeah, around five minutes each period.
For each student? Each participant, each?
For every academic period, we shave the time off so that we could have that time built for CREW.
Okay, just so, just so.
So maybe I missed.
No, 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 not at all. I confess ignorance to this, and I'm sure that many in the public are also unaware. How much time in total is, was formally dedicated to traditional classroom teaching, which will now be given to this CREW project on a weekly basis?
So on a weekly basis, so?
I mean roughly, how many minutes?
About 85 minutes in a six-day period.
85 minutes total for all students?
Correct.
Thank you. Second question is, how are you judging the success of this program? You judge the success of traditional programs like, or traditional classes like math, English, by teacher evaluation, by grades, et cetera? How are you judging the success or lack of of this program?
So we're going to look at things like attendance and discipline, and as we walk through and kind of monitor to see how engaging those CREW periods are. You know, is there conversation, is there some interaction, are they, you know, is it comfortable and flexible where kids can engage? But really, we're going to be looking at attendance and discipline, things along those lines.
No, I appreciate the answer there, but I'm trying to figure out how that directly relates. Attendance and discipline is a part of, with or without CREW. That's a part of the overall Rogers expectation.
Correct.
Our high school expectation. So you take the attendance twice a day at Rogers, and we get a report, and you get a report, obviously, that shows how many students are absent, how many students are tardy.
Correct.
And that has been going on since I've been on the school committee.
Right.
So there was no CREW prior. What does that have to do, the attendance rate and the judgment, how do you prove that attendance is improving, or that tardism is decreasing based on CREW? What is the hardcore result?
So we'll make comparisons from years past to this year, and then at some point, we're going to be building in surveys that we're going to ask kids about.
Again, I completely understand that, and this is the last point I'll make on question number two. How do you prove that attendance that increases in the Rogers High School calendar, school calendar year of 1819, has anything to do with CREW? In other words, if the attendance goes up, if the rate of attendance improves, and the rate of tardism decreases, tell me how we rate of tardism decreases, tell me how we can point to crew as a substantive reason for that.
So my question would be, what would be the difference between years past to this present year, and what kind of availability to relationships have we created? And that would be, for us, the measure. It's not a clear, here's how crew impacts all of those things, but it's an overall observation.
Fair enough. Last question. Has there been any student at Rogers High School, considering crew as a part of a new schedule overall, who has been forced to choose between taking a, what I'll call, traditional class offering, in particular, an AP class offering, versus, or choose between, I should say, a traditional class offering and a NACTAC or PTEC program? Specifically, have there been any students who have been, or parents, families who have been forced to choose, you can either take AP Physics, AP Biology, AP Mathematics, AP English, or you can take a program that NACTAC offers, Residential Carpentry, Autobody, AOIT, et cetera? And I ask that question because it relates overall to the schedule at Rogers High School, which crew is a new part of. Thank you.
Okay. Well, so crew has not impacted those kind of decisions at all? Every high school, kids have to make choices. We try our hardest to not have those choices happen, have kids have to make those. You know, so it's really about trying to schedule classes where they're not going to be in conflict of other things. But with any high school, sometimes those choices have to be made. So I would say yes.
Thank you, Principal Vance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Gaines?
I know we're using the term crew, but is the advisory a recommendation from a requirement for high schools and middle schools?
So we have to personalize for kids, and the advisory or crew period is a way to personalize for students. It came out of the BEP, about making sure that kids have a connection and a pathway that is personalized for them. So that is a way that we're meeting that.
So you are fulfilling a requirement?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, did you have one? Oh, welcome. So the, moving on now, the next item moves us into item six, our action items. And item 6.1, Superintendent Jermaine, the first item is the IT director, is Patrick? I don't, is he? I don't see him.
I do not see him here. All right.
So someone else going to present 6.1, or?
The 6.1 is for the renewal of the subscription to, I believe it's-
Blackboard Connect.
It's, excuse me? It's Blackboard Connect, it's what we use, and it's just a routine renewal of the contract.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Sylvia.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion's been made for approval of the contract by Mrs. Sylvia, seconded by Mrs. Gaines. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Collins?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Superintendent Jermaine or Dr. Colley, if he's here, is this item budgeted?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay. Under what portion of the budget is it located?
Do you want to come to the mic?
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 6.2, request for approval of the Fuse Architect contract with the schools, and I believe Dr. Bean is going to discuss that for us.
So the Fuse Architect contract is an extension from the one-year contract that we had with Highlander. So we are hoping to approve the contract, which will extend their contract through the end of October.
This October?
This October. Originally, they thought the contract, originally their budget with Nellie May, who was funding their grant, was going to end at the end of the school year in June, but Nellie May agreed to extend the contract until the end of October.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the recommendation.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Gaines to approve the motion, seconded by Mrs. Sylvia. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Collins?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Superintendent Jermaine or Dr. Colley, is this item budgeted in the fiscal year 2019 budget?
It's a grant. It's a grant through Highlander who got it.
No, I completely understand that. Grants are accepted into the overall budget. Has this been budgeted ahead of time? We can't accept grants without putting it into the budget, as you all know. Has this been included in the budget ahead of time? We've gotten into a lot of trouble in the past by spending money that we don't have, and a lot of that comes from grants and other places where we don't keep track. Have we made assurances that this grant will in fact be put in a segregated fund as a part of the budget, so we spend nothing else but this and do nothing else but this with regard to the spending?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. And just one comment on this, I'm sure Highlander Institute is a fine institute, we've had dealings with them before, but, you know, they're coming into our schools and doing what we expect them to do as an extension of the teaching program. And, I mean, if you look at their contract here, I mean, they've misspelled dozens of things in their contract, not the least of which is four of our teachers. If you look at the engagement terms under the contract, they've spelled the names wrong of our teachers, Anthony Hanos, Raleigh Brennan, and Brittany Coleman. Ask them to get the names right, at the very least, if they're coming into the schools to work with the teachers. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item 6.3, request for approval of RFP 19-008 tire changer for cars and light trucks for the, I believe it's for the automotive program in the NACTAC.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Second.
Motion's been made for approval of the item number, the item by Mrs. Sylvia, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Repeating my last two questions. First of all, it's an excellent need, or it's an excellent program, and there's a high need for this piece of equipment. Is this piece of equipment budgeted? This is over $10,000. Have we budgeted this?
Yes, it's budgeted through the Perkins Grant that's been approved all the way up the chain up to Ride.
Okay, again, I'll ask the same question. Is the grant segregated so that the money-
Yes.
-can only be spent for this purpose?
It was segregated for this particular piece of equipment.
And it's a one-year grant, correct? Or a one-time grant?
It's a one-time grant, correct.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item up is 6.5, requests for acceptance of 2008, 2019 McKenney Vento grant, and I believe Dr. Bean-
Skip.
Did I skip?
Skip.
I did? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Item 6.4, request for approval of the Salve internship placement program for hall monitors at Rogers High School, and I believe Mr. Vance is going to speak on this.
So we've been talking with Vincent Petraka from the ADJ program at Salve about trying to create a relationship with Salve around having interns come into the building from their criminal justice program and take over for where our hall monitors were. Part of this move is to have a continual pool of candidates, because last year, when we first started, it was a struggle to get people to fill those spots. So this is a way to make sure that we continually have that pool. It also creates a vetting process where the university is going to vet those candidates out before they get presented to us, and then we have a conversation with them before we agree to anybody joining our ranks. They would all be BCI-checked, they would have to go through all the process of getting kind of formally hired, but at the same time, it also would reduce our cost. We're paying our hall monitors more than double what we'd be offering for our Salve interns to come and join us to do this work.
So you've heard the motion. Have you heard the item before you, the request for the internship program? We'd have to have a motion before we can have discussion.
Oh, so no.
Second.
Motion to approve has been made by Mrs. Gaines, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Any discussion, Mrs. Gaines? I think was going to go first.
No, I was pointing to Mrs.
Oh, Mrs. Bowlen?
Yeah, I have questions. First of all, is this a budgeted item, Mr. Colley? It is in the budget then, okay. My second question is, I guess, when I started thinking about these hall monitors, I know that they're to take people from, you know, point A to point B, the visitors, but in order to prove this tonight, I would love to see that we're going to start watching the kids that are leaving the school, because I believe that we have a real issue, and how could you, is it possible to reutilize those, you know, some of those hall monitors so that kids aren't leaving the building, because you can't learn if you're not there, you know? And I think, you know, on Friday, I witnessed an incredible number of them leaving at two different occasions, and it was very disheartening.
Yeah, so that is something that we can definitely work with them on, making sure that they're in the locations of the building where kids are leaving, to try and redirect them back in. You know, part of the issue, part of the reason that we went with the hall monitors was the amount of doors that Rogers has. So with a crew of staff or interns monitoring the building, it'll be, kids will have less of an opportunity to leave, but it's still a lot of doors to manage all.
So I'm just throwing this out, but how about if we have one sitting in a car down at the bottom of Old Fort Road, because that's the direction they're all headed, you know, and then the kids, especially for a good period of time, and then maybe do it, you know, just, you know, every so often, but, you know, I think it'd be a much better use, you know, or a very good use of this time so that kids aren't leaving, because do we have, are they, do you serve a detention now if you skip class?
Yes.
And detention set up, right?
Correct.
Every day we have it?
Yes.
And you're getting them to serve it when you catch them, or?
Yep.
I just, okay. I just, I personally would love to see something, you know, like to really work on this absenteeism and kids leaving. I think there's a pervasive, like, just philosophy amongst kids that they can pick and choose which classes they go to, and, you know. So I'd love to see us be able to do something and really use that Sea Tree, you know, grant, and whether, you know, I know that we have a couple people hired from that, so I'm just disappointed right now with what's going on, so, but not with you, but with the students and their attendance.
I wouldn't say that that perception is pervasive. The vast majority of our kids go to class on time with no issue. It's a smaller number of kids that maybe try to avoid classes. So what we can do is look at how these hall monitors cycle through the building and designate wings, so they have the 400 wing, they have, you know, in front of the gymnasium, they have the academic, so they're just in those areas, and it's not really out of eye shot, you know, but having more available gives us more eyes in the building.
Mr. Vance?
Yes?
That issue of leaving school, are there any legitimate reasons why kids would be leaving school in the middle of the day?
If they were dismissed for doctor's appointments, any kind of appointments that have parental approval, if kids are 18, it's, they can sign themselves out.
But those, you wouldn't see six kids?
No. No. We wouldn't see a mass of kids leaving.
Right.
Right.
That's what we're seeing.
Okay.
Masses, Friday.
Did you have a question, Dr. Flowers?
No, my only, it was a statement that the number of times I was at the high school this past year, mainly to see the girl I mentor, the monitors whom I saw were very professional, they really kept an eye on things, they, and just chatting informally with some of them, they, I got some good feedback. I mean, to me, this is an investment in safety.
Mr. Collins, just going to, Mrs. Neri would like to speak, I'm just going to allow her to speak.
Oh, yeah.
Go right ahead. Just identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Aden Neri. I work at Salve, and I have just a couple questions, clarifications maybe. You mentioned that this is a relationship with our ADJ program, Administration of Justice program.
Correct.
Did they, did they reach out to you, or only because we already have a relationship with our education students? I'm interested to know why that particular department and not if it's open to all the students at Salve, or just that particular department. So did they reach out to you, or did you reach out to them? Just kind of curiosity.
So we reached out to Salve. We reached out-
And directly to Dave Smith, or?
Correct. Because of the hall monitors that we have in place, many of them have come through that program, and it was for the Salve side of this, it was a way to give them almost like security-type experience that aligns to the program.
And then, thank you. And my second question, because I'm hearing about absenteeism and students leaving, so our Salve students are 18 to 22, so they're not much older than the high school students?
Yes.
So I wonder if you've thought about how that works in terms of discipline? So if you have a senior ADJ student who's 21 and has to talk to a 17, almost 18-year-old, I'm just wondering a little bit about how that works? Is the gap isn't that wide age-wise?
Right. So their role is not to interact, it's to observe and report. All right, so when they see things, they're trying to, you know, they will try to guide a student back to class, but once they really meet some sort of resistance, they're radioing for myself, the dean, the assistant principal. So it's really observe and report, make sure doors are shut, make sure gates are shut, you know, securing the facility, more so than interacting and disciplining students.
Yeah, just wondering. And maybe one suggestion, we have a, we have a good social work program, we have a really good education program. There, I think there are other places to reach out to. I understand that you're looking for security, but there are, as you were mentioning about crew and making relationships, just in terms of perception, it's administration of justice students and not social work students, who could also use some of that experience of being in a, being in a high school setting. So just a suggestion, there are other departments who could benefit from the experience, not just the criminal justice or administration of justice program. Thank you.
That's great, thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield to, if it's okay with the chair, I'll yield to Ms. O'Brien from the public.
Thank you. Melody O'Brien, I have a student at Thompson. I have one question. I know, Mr. Vance, you had said that you don't expect a lot of interaction with these hall monitors and the students, but how are you preparing these hall monitors to interact with your special needs children? In case there's meltdowns, in case children can't regulate themselves, and what happens when a hall monitor thinks that these children are being violent or not understanding the actual severity of what's going on because they're special needs and there may not be a parent available with the student?
Yep. And so that's part of the reason why their role is to observe and report, because they're not well, they're not versed with all the students in our building and the differences that they bring to the table. So if there is a student that is, you know, displaying different kinds of behavior, they're going to call for somebody else to interact with that student. They're not interacting with-
So there's going to be no hands-on with any special needs children?
No, no, no.
Or any interaction with special needs children?
So-
In the sense of any physical or-
No.
Trying to restrain?
Nope.
Okay.
Never.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of my questions were well-asked by Ms. O'Brien and by Ms. Neri, so I won't ask them. I have the same concerns regarding interaction with students who require power educators, and I also have the same concern regarding interaction with students when there is a very small age difference between the Salve intern and the student at Rogers High School. Those have been addressed. My question to the principal and to the superintendent or the business manager is, first a statement, then a question, as you are aware, and this last state- As you are aware, in this last state budget, the General Assembly approved and Governor Romando signed into law a requirement that a district like Newport will be, will have a mandate that we provide a community service officer to be present in the district, particularly at schools with a minimum number of students who attend the schools. Rogers High School, I believe, falls into that category. So we must abide by the law and budget for a Newport police officer or a community police officer, however you'd like to define them, one and the same. Have we budgeted for that expectation, number one? I see Dr. Colley saying we have not. Okay. I would suggest to you that that's a higher priority for us to budget for a police officer, a community service.
Excuse me?
Mr. Collins?
We have been working with the Newport Police Department and we've been sharing the services. And the grant that did go out was for schools that did not have any community officers in their building at that time. We do. And we've had a very successful relationship with the Newport Police Department, so we've been sharing that service.
Have we budgeted for it?
It is not in our budget, full budget.
It is not, okay. How, what guarantee do we have that the city of Newport, the police department, or anyone else will? It's, it's a requirement on the district, it's not a requirement on the city or on the police department. If we haven't budgeted for it, but we're spending the money for these, for these interns, what guarantee do we have that we will be able to provide the money for a community police officer, a community service officer, as the state budget says? We are required to do it, I believe, as of July 1st of this year. We can get clarification on that, I'm sure. But it concerns me that we are spending for this or proposing to spend for this when we haven't yet budgeted for what the state expects of us.
Mr. Vance, can I just ask a follow-up to that? I mean, I, we can follow up with Mr. Collins' question and get the, the answer for that, the state regulation. But the community police officer, he's been in the school, as far as I know, that the officer's in school from the beginning of the day to the end of the day on a regular basis and from day, from the first day of school. We've had that community police officer in the school, correct?
Correct. Yep. Yeah, he, they've actually been in place since halfway, halfway through the third quarter last year.
So since the middle of last year, we've had the presence all day from the beginning of school to the end of school of the community police officer?
Correct.
Provided by the Newport Police Department?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great, great question and thanks for the answer, Principal Vance. I'm, I'm well aware of that, the public might not be aware of it. My, my concern is obviously that we have the budget to provide for that because it is now required. And if we're spending money for interns to come in and patrol Rogers High School, we ought to make sure we absolutely have a guarantee either from the city, the police department, or written into our own budget that we will do that. The second concern and the reason I brought up the police department, the community police officer, the community, the police officer, let's just put it that way, is because to many questions that have been brought up earlier, the police department and officers within the police department are given certain rights by law to do certain things, which Salve interns are not. To have a police officer within, and this I believe, I can't speak to the General Assembly's intention, but I believe this is in part what they intended. To have a presence of a police officer within the school department and at schools with a certain number of students is a very visible and very strong signal that you send. They, again, are empowered with certain rights by state law which Salve interns will not be. So if we don't have a guarantee that the Newport School Department is paying for a police officer or that the city of Newport or the police department will continue providing a police officer, then I'm not voting for this before we budget for the police officer. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs., Dr. Flowers?
Just a comment. I believe I heard a concern that some of the students, the university students are, it's probably true, are not much older than some of the older students at the high school. But neither are some of the brand-new teachers. When, if you, when you graduate, you're probably turning 22 on average. So I think the, if someone has been trained well, and I would assume, looking at the name of the, of the person from the ADJ department, I'm sure that's, the students are very, very well-trained. Again, what I observed on many occasions, I was, I got a positive vibe from the whole thing too. So yes, having a, a uniformed officer present adds a certain element to encourage the proper behavior. But having some others around there and making sure that when people go into the building to visit, to go to the guidance office, the principal, or to meet with a student, it does guarantee their security, no matter who, you know, you, people may know who you are, but it doesn't matter. If you're not wearing their badge, you get the visitor's badge, that sort of thing. So they are ensuring a great, a good level of security. So to me, it's an investment. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, we'll also look that up. Dr. Colley's, because we can't find it, so we're looking it up to see if it's a requirement or we can share it as we have been doing.
Thank you, we can get that information. Thank you. Next item is 6.5, request for acceptance of the 2018-19 McKinney-Vento Grant. Dr. Bean will...
I move acceptance.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve the request for the grant made by Mrs. Gaines, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 6.6. Request for approval of NACTEC tuition rates for 2019-20.
Move approval.
Second.
So I, okay, that'd be approval. Motion's been made for approval of the tuition rates by Dr., by Mrs. Gaines, seconded by Mrs. Sylvia.
I was going to add, but I could add it in a second. Would rather I do it in a second.
Well, I don't know the, I don't know that we've discussed the rate that we're considering, so I'm not quite sure. The motion, the motion came before the discussion on the motion. So with the discussion has been, we've been in discussion about the rates of tuition. We've had presentation last month, Mr. Young gave us a presentation and provided us with the information from the state about the maximum tuitions. We have in agreement with our sending districts that we have a flat rate that they adhere to. And that rate has been $14,000 a year for as long as I can remember. It, it is above a couple of the sending districts in our, in our area. It is below others, so that's why the agreement between the sending districts has always been made amongst the superintendents. So as a result of that, my recommendation was to raise the tuition for next year $500 and subsequently the next three years, it would be a $500 increase. This allows the sending districts to plan for the increase in their budgets as they do it over the next three years, as well as increasing our tuition $1,500 over a three-year period. So that was my motion. The intended motion this evening would be to increase it $500 for next school year 1920. And I believe that, I'm going to speak for Mrs. Bowlen, but I believe Mrs. Bowlen's motion was going to be along with that, that we bill at the beginning of the semester. So the number of students, the beginning, the first day of the semester of a sending district says they have 10 students coming. We bill for 10 students, and if they drop out during the semester, we still have the money for that semester for the cost that we've incurred. So I don't want to speak for it, but I'm just adding that to the motion so it's a cleaner motion.
Right, that, that's exactly what I, you added, I was wondering, the quarter or do we go to the semester? So I'm going to go to Mr. Young to talk about this for a minute, then we'll...
The, the first quarter's tough. I think you have to give, you know, a couple-week window because, you know, students change their mind the day of or they'll come here for two days and think, you know, the bus ride isn't what I thought it was, or some things will change. So if you, you know, bill in advance for that first, especially with ninth graders. So if you bill in advance for that first quarter, I think that, that's a little tough. Maybe, you know, at the end of first quarter and then second, third, and fourth at the beginning or something like that. But I think we just need a little flexibility with, and then we may add some students, you know, after the first day of school. Somebody, if we have a waitlist for a program and someone drops, then we can add another one. So I just, just that first quarter, I think, is just a little tough to bill in advance.
So I'm trying to think how we should word this and just because, just so that everybody out here knows, we just, we want to make sure that, you know, you've, you've taken the, the resources and you've planned that you're going to have 20 kids in a program. And then when three drop out, you're still providing the resources. So by, you know, moving it to a quarter, to making sure we, we bill by the quarter, I think that was my original thing, like bill by the quarter and not, because it used to be that if they dropped out on March 13th, we quit, we, you know, we quit getting paid on March 13th.
Maybe 10 days into the quarter or, at least in the first quarter. I mean, because it's, like I said, it's, there's a lot of fluidity in that, in that first. Those, even in just within, you know, the traditional high school, there's a lot of movement going on.
Why don't we keep this cleaner and I'll make a second motion to it? Would that be better?
Well, I was going to suggest that we add to the motion that we increase the tuition, set the tuition. And the language that would read along with that tuition would be, we would set the periods when the bills were sent out and paid. So we could set a date that two weeks after the start of school, the, the bill would be sent out for term or for quarter one. And then subsequently after that, quarter two, three, and four, they would be billed on the first day of the quarter.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so that motion's been made and seconded by, motion to approve's been made by Mrs. Gaines, seconded by Mrs. Sylvia.
Made by me.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I can't hear well to my left, I don't know where it came from. Made by Mrs. Bowlen, seconded by Mrs. Gaines. Any questions on that motion, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item up for...
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm sorry, are we going to vote on the, we voted for an amendment, but will we vote for the original proposal?
There was one motion made, the motion was made to increase the NACTEC tuition for next school year $500 per student and to bill the second, two weeks into the first quarter and then on the first day of subsequent quarters. So it was one motion.
It would...
The first motion was not valid.
You never, yeah, so we, that motion was never, we made a second motion that was approved by Mrs. Bowlen, seconded by Mrs. Gaines. First motion was made without a motion and we didn't act upon that.
First, so if I'm correct, the first motion was made with no second?
We could say that, yes. The first motion was made prior to a motion being made. So the item needed a motion to be made.
By your recommendation.
Yes.
All right, I, the vote is the vote, but, and I appreciate the fact that we are increasing the tuition for non-Newport residents. And apparently we are allowed to do so. In the past, I've suggested we increase it. And I was told we, we can't do it without some type of coordination with other districts. But it should be noted, or I want to note, that we pay $19,200 approximately per student that attends the Newport School District. And we're charging for a full-time education, far less for non-Newporters. So in effect, Newporters are subsidizing the, the tuition for non-Newport students.
So, and again, I agree with you 100%, Mr. Collins. I'd encourage everybody to take this up with our state legislators because as I said, the amount that we're allowed to bill per the state is far less than the $19,000 per student cost that we have. I don't think anybody is, I'm looking for the sheet that we have in our backup, but I believe the highest that anybody in our, in our district is 17,000, in the low 17,000. So that would be something that we'd have to go through the state legislature and get them to increase the amount that we can bill in the NACTEC program. So it is something to work on, I agree.
Mr. Chairman, I just ask for a brief point of personal privilege, if I might, since we have already left the agenda item. But I have looked at the state law regarding what the budget, the state budget requires and will reimburse us for. Not going to bother going through the whole thing. But the budget that was passed in late June of this year will allow for a 50% reimbursement to local school districts for the cost of resource officers. But if we do not according to the budget, if we do not hire a resource officer who is a career law enforcement officer employed by a police department and having come with 40 hours of training in school policing, we will not receive that 50% reimbursement from the state. So I suggest that we look very strongly into doing just that.
I'll make sure that we get that cleared up for next month's meeting. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is 6.7, request for the approval of the Rogers High School boiler condensate replacement. I believe that's replacement of the condensate pump, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe Mr. Harrop is here. He can fill us in on, can fill us in on that. Mr. Harrop?
Good evening, I'm Tom Harper, I'm Superintendent of Facilities for the City of Newport and Newport Public Schools. So when we brought in ATC to do the startups on the boiler, they noticed that the condensate lines are extremely deteriorated and at the point of failure. So in essence, what they need to do is replace those condensate lines before they start up the boiler for the season. The fair being that if they do not replace the lines, they're going to start up the boiler and they're just going to blow immediately and then we'll have an emergency repair versus being a little bit proactive and taking care of the lines prior to the boiler being started up for the season.
Okay, thanks for that explanation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Sylvia.
I move approval.
Second.
Mrs. Sylvia has rec, moved for approval of the item, seconded by Mrs. Gaines. Any discussion? Seeing none, oh, sorry, Mrs. Bowlen?
Is this budgeted?
Yes, this is part of the Rogers High School repair and maintenance budget, it's in the line item. And ATC is the contract service provider for the city and for the high school. Actually, all of the schools.
Any other questions, discussion? Mr. Collins?
Yeah, I, I wasn't going to ask a question, but the budget, when Mrs. Bowlen asked the question of whether it was budgeted, and your answer is appreciated, but there are two separate budget items, are there not? The first is the contract that we have with the company. But the second is the materials necessary to replace what?
So the contract with the company is the vehicle by which we can call them in to complete the work without necessarily having to go out to bid, which saves us quite a bit of time. And then the funding, because it's below threshold for CIP, is part of the money that is allotted for Rogers High School, in this case, every year for repair and maintenance of the physical plant.
Where are you finding this budget item for repair and replacement of the physical plant? What line item in the budget?
So that, I'm, I don't have the numbers of the budget memorized, but I believe Rogers High School was allotted approximately $114,000 this year for repair and maintenance. It is part of the budget. Within the facilities arena, we carry that line item. For each of the schools, every fiscal year, there is money set aside to take care of the physical building structures themselves. So I can get the number for you unless Mr. Colley has it on his computer, but...
No, no problem at all. I don't need that number because you've cleared it up. If you could answer this for me though, what is, we, we as a school committee, when we adopted the budget, did not put in, in my opinion, the type of money we needed for physical plant repairs, maintenance, et cetera. And part of the reasoning, I think, that the committee didn't do that is because the city is required to take care and control of the building that they own. Why is this money coming out of that $114,000 fund rather than us, since it's over $5,000? Why is this money coming out of that $114,000 fund, rather than us, since it's over $5,000? And I believe the agreement we had, formally or informally with the city, is if it's $5,000 or less, we pay for it, if it's more than $5,000, the city pays for it. Am I right about that?
No, that is incorrect. The city has a line item in the city budget for projects that are in excess of $15,000, and then there are still other portions of the definition that solely because a project is over $15,000 does not qualify it as a capital improvement. So if it qualifies as a capital improvement and it's over $15,000, if it meets both conditions, then the city can fund the project with CIP funds.
I completely understand, thank you very much for that explanation.
Uh, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 6.8.
Thank you.
This is a request for a potential RFP for cell tower. As we know, this has been a, uh, an issue of contention with the city. The cell tower leases expired some time ago, at the city's insistence or urging, the cell tower was allowed to stay as they studied other locations. The city has, it's become apparent that the city, there are no other locations, and the city has encouraged us to put the lease, the leases back out. This document is a request for proposals from potential vendors to lease that site. And many, many, after, many of the hearings with the neighbors, this was shared with the neighbors, it's been in our public content, there were many things written into this RFP that the neighbors had complaints about regarding the unsightliness of the site, the tower, the buildings, as far as noise, as far as response to complaints. So this RFP really has the concerns of the neighbors written into it, and, so I encourage passage of this RFP for request for proposals for the cell tower site.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Sylvia.
I move approval of the issuance of the RFP.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by, motion's been made by Mrs. Sylvia, seconded by Mrs. Gaines. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Collins?
I'll make this very brief, I think what we're doing tonight is, despite what the chairman said, a complete insult to the neighbors, they have gone through this process, a prostrus, a process which has been very frustrating to them for no less than three and a half years now. This Newport School Committee is on record as telling the three cellphone tower lessees that they need to vacate the property at Rogers High School. They have not done so, they have ignored a vote by the Newport School Committee. We are legally, as our attorney has told us, the responsible party for any lessees that are to use our property at any of the three schools until we turn it over to the Newport City Council, or the City of Newport. What we are doing now is not only ignoring, or proposing to do now, is not only ignoring what we have already set on record, which is get out, go find another location, don't use the Newport School Department as a means to getting a cheaper deal. There are plenty of places in Newport, there are plenty of places that the state owns in Newport as well, where you can get a deal to put your cellphone towers, but you just don't want to spend the money. You don't want to spend the appropriate resources that you, as three companies with multi-billion-dollar net, or multi-billion-dollar caps, have, and have at, at your disposal. If we do this, we're telling the neighbors, again, despite what the chairman says, we're telling the neighbors, we don't care what we said in several past votes, we don't care it's a disturbance to you. We believe that we work for the city, we believe we need to do the city's will, and furthermore, we believe that the three multi-billion-dollar cellphone companies are more important to us than you are as neighbors. I would highly urge my colleagues to reject this proposal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion?
Um, I will not, yeah, I will not be supporting it for the same reasons I didn't support it before.
Mrs. Gaines?
I think you said in your remarks that you had worked with the neighbors, that they were aware of these, the circumstances of this lease.
Correct.
Are you okay with it?
Uh, well, I, I've discussed it with them, I, this particular item, we put on the public side of the agenda so all could see it, and I discussed it with many neighbors, so they had the opportunity to be here tonight, as they will. This is, we are not approving, this is a, a request for proposals, so the proposals will still be adopted at a meeting in the future. This is just simply a request to the vendors, come back at us. We've put certain caveats in here, we've just about tripled the rent from what the original lease was to the minimum bid, and, so we've put caveats in there to, at the neighbors' request, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that I could safely say that all the neighbors support this, but the neighbors are aware, and again, they'll have the opportunity before the leases are approved by us to come before us and, and speak on them as well.
Thank you.
Dr. Flowers?
Well, as you just said, this is simply the request for proposals, and just looking at the stipulations here, just very briefly going right through them here, it seems like you have dozens of very particular points that should be, be covered in this. I mean, this is just one step. When the discussion began, probably about three and a half years ago, if not more, um, all I said one night was I certainly hope people didn't, wouldn't lose their signal, and I was screamed at. But then, as discussion went on, some people were legitimately concerned that one or the other of the three servers would not be able to provide the signal, which of course, it's important that we have that. I mean, looking at a lot of the suggestions here of just probably a total improvement over what is there right now, so, again, the request for proposal is certainly not a done deal, but I think it's something that we can move in the right direction.
Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Collins?
Thank you. You noted that we have near, but, are near-tripled the, uh, lease payment that we will accept per year. Can you tell me, or can Mr. Galvin tell us, or the business manager tell us, what the lease is, or what the rates are, that each one of the cellphone providers, or the cell providers are paying us now?
The last one was $29,000 per year.
Okay.
Uh, so in that case, it would be a little bit more than doubling.
Okay.
I don't have the other two in front of me, but that was the most recent one.
Okay, that's $29,000, and I appreciate what the chairman said, but I, I do not believe, Mr. Chairman, with due respect, that we're coming, that we are tripling, or proposing to triple the rates they pay. At best, I think, we're doing a increase of double plus $3,700. Okay. So I just want the public to understand that it's not a tripling, proposed tripling of the rates. We will receive, if, if this goes through, as is, we will receive $180,000 per year from the providers, if all three stay the same, and if there are only three, versus, I believe, what, what we have now, which is a little over $94,600. So we're asking the neighbors to go through the same type of inconvenience that they have for an increase of, I'll just round it up, less than $100,000 in a $42.8 million budget. Again, I, I would ask that my colleagues reject this request for proposal. Let's not let it even get beyond this step.
Any other questions or, or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries.
Mrs. Nash, or Ms. Chairman, can I have a, can you identify for the public, the members of the committee who voted for and against that proposal?
Yes, voting for, Dr. Flowers, Mr. Gomes, Mrs. Sylvia, and Mrs. Gaines, voting against Mr. Collins and Mrs. Boland.
Thank you very much.
Our next item, we move into item seven, is our consent agenda. Items 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3. 7.1 is a request, approval of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion's been made to approve, approval of prior minutes by Mrs. Gaines, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is 7.2, personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve the personnel actions has been made by Mrs. Gaines, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Collins?
Uh, have, can you tell me again, I apologize, what portions of, of this part of the...
Yes, I can.
Personnel...
At the beginning of the meeting, the motion was made to remove items D2 and F1 from the consent, uh, calendar consent agenda for this evening, under personnel actions. That motion was made and seconded at the beginning of the meeting, and approved.
Thank you very much, and I have, at the appropriate time, I, I have a question regarding personnel matters.
Okay, so the, uh, motion's been made and seconded, so now would be the appropriate time for questions or comments on the consent agenda for personnel actions.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Jermaine, I support most of what you are proposing here, but regarding item number four, A4, you are proposing an interim director of student services for Rogers High School. Can you tell us what the cost for that interim director is, please?
Yes, the interim director will make $500 per day, working three days a week.
Okay, so $2,500 a week for...
$1,500.
Oh, I'm sorry, per day, so it's not a, a week, okay. $500 a day and $1,500 a week, based on a three-day work week. Are we making progress toward a permanent director of student services? Or how long do you suspect we will have an interim?
I have a candidate ready to go.
Is it on the agenda?
No, it's not. The person was not able to give a commitment over the weekend, but I do have a person, a very highly qualified person.
Okay, thank you. The second question I have is regarding the appointment A14, Director of Human Resources.
Yes.
Uh, I would, would ask you why you have designed a contract, which is in front of the members of the school committee, which is a three-year contract, almost, and includes the pay not just for the, the coming fiscal year, but the pay for the following two fiscal years. Why do you think it's appropriate to put a contract before us which includes pay for the next two years, that we will be obligated to give this individual regardless of the job performance?
Because I think it's very important for our employees, especially those of, who are in our administrative levels, to understand that they do have some type of salary that they can look at going forward, and know, at least for their family and their planning, what they can do going forward. As we've discussed before, one of the biggest challenges we've had in our district for, for the past three and a half years, we've had discussions about this, that we've literally put our administrators on TBD. That means Salary To Be Determined. And even now, I have some that have not been addressed, and that have gone past the July 1 date. In our, some of our meetings that we've had, we've actually had discussions about creating either a warrant or something very similar to what the city presents, in which there's a predictable budget for administrators, so that we can do better budgeting for all our employees. And I believe as we move forward, we're having, going to be having discussions pretty soon with our unions, and we'd like to do something very similar in that vein.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, in the last 12, maybe 15 months, every new administrator who has been proposed to this school committee, new administrator, not a renewal of contract, has been presented with a one-year contract proposal. Uh, the one-year contract proposal gives the Newport School Committee, and specifically gives the superintendent, an opportunity to judge how well that person is doing in their position over the last, at the time, 12 months. We have asked for that, and it's been, it's been given. We have not provided either a three-year guaranteed contract for new administrators, or, more important, we have certainly not provided a three-year pay scale for new employees. This is setting us up in a position that we will be obligated to pay the individual for three years and honor their contract for three years. I understand that there are clauses in the contract which allow for the termination of the contract, but it's very hard to meet those, those clauses. If the individual is not performing up to the level that the superintendent or the school committee feels is appropriate, we will now be obliged, if we approve this contract, to pay the individual for three years. So as, as a result of those concerns, and in keeping with the, the practice we have had for the last 15 months, Mr. Chairman, I move to amend, uh, Appointment A14. I move to amend to offer a one-year contract from 10/1/2018 to 6/30/2019.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs...
So we, so just so the public knows, everyone knows, we are trying to hire individuals to leave a job they already have with guaranteed salaries, guaranteed contracts, and the reason we have lost several key players in this administration, and will be losing more, is because we do not put any faith, nor do we treat our administrators appropriately, and for that matter, we should be treating all our staff appropriately, as far as giving them raises when appropriate. People cannot leave their careers and jobs for one-year-only contracts. I've never heard of such a thing anywhere, especially if you're in a, a high-paying salaried position. Also, as Mr. Collins just said and stated, that because of evaluations and reviews, there are clauses in there that it's not a guarantee. That it's treating them respectfully, and treating them as a person we want to join our organization. We want good, qualified people to want to work here, and we're having a problem. And I think we need to start to reflect upon why we're having the problem, and we've been having the problem since we instituted the one-year-old-only TBDs. We've actually had people that have come from positions and jobs that have been getting certain benefits, I'll call it packages, and then they come to the Newport Public Schools, and our benefit packages are laughing stock comparatively to other places, and what we do, because for some reason, we want to nickel and dime our administrators. And I think we need to start, and we have had these discussions, these are not new discussions, the figures you have in front of you, you have seen before, and they have been discussed. So I think we need to start to get real and be public about how we want to treat the people who work here in our school system.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, just one, let me just, the, your motion's been made, there hasn't been a second, so if we get second, we'll continue on the discussion, but if not, there's, is there a second to Mr. Collins' motion?
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to go back to the discussion, I'd like to address two things that the superintendent brought up. She suggested that she's never heard of such a thing, giving a one-year contract. She must have missed the meeting at which we have given one-year contracts to, for example, the principal of Thompson Middle School. She also suggested we're nickeling, nickel and diming our administrators. If $98,174 is nickel and diming someone, then I suggest you look at what the taxpayers who are paying those bills are actually dealing with in their everyday lives. This is a bad contract, this is not a bad person for the job, it's a good person, but the only way I vote for this contract, if it's for one year with the budgeted dollars.
Understood, thank you.
The dollars are budgeted.
Um, Ida Neary, again, Salve Regina, for a point of comparison to higher ed, we, this year, and as, as of July 1, we have a new provost, we have a new dean of graduate studies, and we are in, on the search right now for a new president, and all of those contracts are three-year contracts. We do not give out one-year contracts, it's, we can't hire anybody for one year. So that's the only time we have, one year. So that's the only time we have one-year contracts, was for the provost last year, who was an interim provost, and it was a set one-year program. So I don't know how it works at the high school, but certainly in higher education, those positions, vice presidents and above, they're three-year contracts, and we, that's how we run. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other discussion? Any other questions? Seeing none? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion was made for approval of the consent calendar as it stands amended. Motion was made and seconded, all those...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, I...
You mean amended from the beginning of the meeting?
It was amended at the beginning of the meeting.
When we took those items off, yeah.
Correct.
That's what we mean by...
I beg your pardon, I, I did want to ask another question before the vote, thank you.
Mr. Collins.
Thank you. The same question I have regarding appointment number A30, I believe is, there is a revised version, but I think it holds the same for both the original agenda and the revised agenda, it does indeed. Item number A30, this is the appointment for the elementary operations and SEL, Social Emotional Learning Coordinator at Pell. The first question I have is, is this effectively the position that Kathy McKeon held last school year?
The position is the third administrator. The position has been revised, based upon student data and student needs in the school.
Okay, and I think the individual is well-qualified. We have before us the same instance that I mentioned a minute ago. We have a three-year contract with a three-year pay proposal. I oppose that, and I offer, Mr. Chairman, an oral amendment. I propose that item A30 in the appointments column be amended to offer a one-year contract from 10/1/2018 to 6/30/2019, provided that the money is budgeted.
Okay, you've heard Mr. Collins' oral motion. Is there a second? There is no second, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would recommend that my colleagues vote against the consent agenda because of the three-year contracts that exist for the two positions I've highlighted. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Collins. The motion carries. Next item of business is 7.3, request of the home, request for approval of home instruction.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mrs. Gaines, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next section is on to reports from superintendent and staff. At this time, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Jermaine and Dr. Colley for expenditure and revenue, he covers the first two, expenditures and revenue, and the public school restricted grant accounts.
Yes, the biggest question is, are there any questions? We've provided the revenues that are coming in. Remember, this is through the end of last month, September, so we still have some areas of revenue that haven't even started to be collected, for example, the Impact Aid. The first amount for this year will probably be at the end of this month, and then we'll start collecting the information for the coming year. But that's where we are with the revenue. Any questions on the revenue side?
Mrs. Bowlen.
My question would be, so the Impact Aid forms are going out this month, is it October 26 usually, I think, the date?
We're probably going to move it up a little bit, just to give us more time to collect it.
What are we gonna, this, you know, obviously, this was a problem last year, can you tell me what we're going to do this year to get these in? What kind of things have we set up?
One of the biggest things we discovered as we went through the process last year, at least, I got in at the very end of the process, but one of the things we discovered was that the elementary and middle school had a better return than the high school. One of the things I would like to do, just like we're doing with the free and reduced lunch applications, is to target families instead of individual students. I think sometimes parents get three of these pieces of paper coming in, they may give it to one, they may give it to none. I think if we just have one going to a household, it'd be a little bit easier to pinpoint who is it that hasn't returned their forms. The other thing we did at the very end of last year was, we worked with, in particular, students that were involved in other activities, like after-school activities, sports, and clubs and such, that they needed to bring those in in order to participate. There has to be a little bit of a, an incentive for some of them to bring them in, especially at the higher grade levels, where that's not kind of their frame of mind, to bring papers back and forth from school to home and home to school. So those are the pieces that we're trying to do. We did develop a family list, so the forms will go first to the elementary school, hopefully, if all the elementary school, like they did last year, pretty much all of them came in. So we should have most of those families, even if they have, you know, siblings in middle school and high school, we won't have to chase those. We'll do the same thing at the middle school, so if they have a sibling, middle school and high school, high school won't have to chase them. So the high school only has to chase the ones that are only at the high school. So that'll hopefully reduce the amount and focus the effort on getting those forms back.
So, I've always got one up.
Just a minute.
My second question was, was on the free and reduced lunch forms, that date turns over, that, what happens is with those forms, that you're, if you qualified last year for free and reduced lunch, then you qualify this year up until a certain day, you get 30 days, and that date's coming up, is it October 15?
15.
Okay, so October 15. And how are we doing on that? And then I also want to say, just because we got some other information tonight, that I was able to extract, that every single child who is free and reduced lunch brings in an extra $1,807 to this district in state aid. That's really important, $1,807. So it's really important, you know, every single form that we collect, you know, really has an impact on, you know, on our district. So how are we doing this year? Can you just catch us up?
I didn't bring those numbers with me, because we're, got stacks still going in the office, trying to process them, but we have received quite a few in the last couple of weeks. So, like I said, there's a stack about this big waiting in the office to be processed.
Can you get help with that?
We've been pretty good. We receive them usually at the end of the week, because that's when the information gets through from one school to the other. So when we get them on Fridays, obviously, there's a big bunch of them to process, but we usually get them done within a day or two.
Mrs. Gaines.
The deficit that we ended the year, $42,000, how do we go about recovering that? You mentioned that if we can recover, how could we recover it?
There's two parts to that. One is the debt for a family does not get erased year to year. It really follows. So, you know, some of it is, there are some families that are going to be getting notices of collection that are going to start to go out once we finish processing this set of free and reduced lunch forms. And unfortunately, I understand that sometimes parents run into hard times, but if they do, they can always put in a free and reduced lunch form application. The other question is going to be, as we budget it into the future, what is going to be the response of the schools and the school committee in general to basically cover the debt of parents who maybe didn't turn it in on time, but according to the accounting principles that we use in the lunch program, you have to record that as a debt, even if, so if a parent literally could have been, the family could be free and reduced lunch in September, but they waited till November to put it in, that period of time between September and November, it's accrued debt for that family. So if we decide to forgive it, it becomes bad debt, in which case, then it has to be taken from the regular budget into the lunch program. So at this point, we're still trying to collect, and as long as we're still trying to collect it, that exists, but it's not considered bad debt.
Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked the same question at the last monthly meeting of the Newport School Committee, so this may have been addressed earlier, but I'll ask it again. I am concerned about fiscal 18, which is already closed out, but as I found out from the answer at the last school committee meeting, we are still receiving invoices for fiscal 18. What's the, what's the standing of the $142,000 that the Newport School Department's bus or transportation provider tells us that we owe them from fiscal 18?
Yeah, I will be meeting with the superintendent, we have reviewed the information, I have formulated an opinion on it, I want to review that opinion with the superintendent and the chairman, and then report back to the school committee at the next meeting, seeking direction and approval to proceed by the school committee on it.
Thank you, Mr. Galvin. Mr. Colley, Dr. Colley, beside the, first of all, is this shortage in the school lunch program, for lack of a better definition, is this program reflective of fiscal 18 or year-to-date fiscal 19? The $42,000?
The $42,000, fiscal 18.
Okay, so my question is, in addition to the roughly $142,000 that the bus company says we owe, in addition to this $42,000 that we owe, is there any additional money that we have not yet paid or that is being disputed for fiscal 18? Let me, before you answer that, let me make clear, I know you know this, perhaps my colleagues don't remember my question last month, or perhaps members of the public don't or didn't see it, but we have already asked the city of Newport for $474,000 additional dollars to pay off a debt that the school department incurred last fiscal year. Putting that aside, not including the $474,000, my understanding is that we have accumulated further debt. $142,000 potentially that we owe the bus company, which, as Attorney Galvin just mentioned, will be potentially litigated or answered somehow. $42,000 from the cafeteria program. $90,000 that the members of the finance subcommittee were made aware of two meetings ago. Is there anything in addition to the $142, the $42, and the $90,000 that will be added to what we ultimately have to ask the city of Newport to pay for, for fiscal 2018?
I believe we're working with the city to get those numbers, the auditors are still here in the city, so as soon as they get their reports all done, the final numbers will come in. At this point, I know that some information was shared with the school committee, but like I said, it's preliminary numbers, they're working with the city to try to solidify those numbers, so that we'll be coming back with what is it that the city and the school are going to work together to do about the fiscal 18 budget.
For round estimates, or for purposes of just, I mean, you don't have to be exact. Do you disagree with, when I say we have asked the city to pay for $475,000 in overspending for fiscal 18? Do you disagree with that?
I'm not sure if it's exactly 475.
That's why I mentioned that it doesn't have to be exact, approximately, do you disagree...
I know we've asked the city to, to help us with the fiscal deficit from 18.
Do you disagree that we potentially will have to ask the city for another $140,000 plus to pay for bus service, that the bus company is telling us we owe?
I would not hazard a guess at this point.
Do you disagree that we will have to pay this $42,000, at least temporarily, absent immediate payment by families or immediate payment for the cafeteria costs?
Again, until all efforts to collect that debt are expended, I would say I don't know what the total amount would be.
I think we're going to have to pay those debts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Moving on, next item would be the restricted grant account, or did you cover that? So we'll be moving on to the enrollment.
There's no other questions?
I don't believe there are, so we move on to the enrollment reports, or the other reports?
Are there any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move, we received reports, 8.3 through 8.7.
Motion's been made to receive, receive the reports 8.3 through 8.7 by Mrs. Sylvia.
Second, seven.
I have a question.
Motion's been seconded by Mrs. Gaines. Question, Mrs. Bowlen.
Yes, Newport data in your backyard just came out, correct?
Correct.
And when I was reviewing that, I see that, that each, in the last three years, that the high school are, attendance rate for a chronic absenteeism, which is defined as 10 days, if you miss more than 10 days out of 180, that's chronic, chronically absent.
No, it's actually if you miss 18 or more days of school.
I'm sorry, 18.
10%.
10%, that's where I got messed up. All right, 18 days, but the, that number has gone up now.
Correct.
For the last three years.
And it has in most school districts.
True.
It's a, it's a very serious problem.
But we're one of the highest, right, we're one of the highest in the state.
Yes.
And we have a grant called a Sea Tree Grant, which is, you know, we've had for the last two years or three?
Three years.
Three years, and so I wonder if it's time to go back to the, you know, the drawing board a little bit here, so we can figure out, you know, like, how we're gonna, you know, what other things we can do to address this. I mean, I pointed out one tonight about maybe having a car sit at the bottom of the road, you know, so kids know they can't leave. I don't, you know, I don't know what, you know, what, we need to be doing something else, something is not working. They said that we have one of the highest in the state.
Correct. So the most frustrating part about chronic absenteeism is, it's not usually just about one thing. It's usually multiple reasons why students either don't want to participate at school or they just don't want to be there. And usually, the factors tie into school, they tie into family, they tie into relationships, they tie into poverty. So there's many different, I'll just say, tentacles to chronic absenteeism. It is a national phenomenon, it's increasing across the country, and it's increasing in almost every single school district in Rhode Island, and it's highest at the high school level. Rogers does have a very high chronic absenteeism, and for those that are wondering, it's, you can have a great attendance rate, but if you have a subpopulation of children that are missing 10% or more of school, that is being chronically absent, and it's the same number of students, and it not only impacts and affects the students that are not in school and not learning, there's actually research that shows it impacts the students in the classroom, and it impacts the entire culture and climate of the school. So there's a lot of different tentacles, it's a very, it's very difficult, and we've tried many different initiatives, and we'll just keep working at it. I mean, there are national experts that can't put their finger on the pulse of why this is happening, but they do show that the more students are involved in their schools, the more they have a part of the decision-making in the schools, they tend to go to school more often, and they tend to be there. It has lifelong impacts. It, it shows that after they graduate high school, it impacts their work behaviors, their work ethics. It's not just something that happens and ends when they leave school. And the worst... And the worst part is, it begins in the K-one-two time. And when those patterns, pattern, people do not understand, if your child, as of today, has missed more than three days of school, there's a high tendency they're going to be chronically absent, and those patterns will continue. It's a better indicator than test scores, standardized test scores in grade eight. By the time they reach sixth grade, if they have patterns of chronic absenteeism, we already know they're not going to probably graduate high school on, on time. So it's just, I, I wish I could look at you and say, we know what to do, we know what it is. The other thing is, if you have them, if you have people sitting in the car telling them to turn around and go back up the hill, most of the time, it's not going to end in a positive way, because now you're telling them to get back into a classroom, that they're already looking at you saying, I don't even want to be here. So, and that's when you run into discipline problems, et cetera. So it's, it's a big problem.
All right. I wanted to thank you, and I wanted to point out, I want to say thank you, Dr. Jermaine, and who, who got her doctorate in the very recent.
Thank you.
Past, and I just think that she, congratulations are in order for that.
Thank you.
Superintendent Jermaine, I just had a question. One of the things I've noticed this year in particular, in looking at the absenteeism, that, is I notice that we get, for those who don't know in the public, we get twice daily, we get an absence report in the morning and one in the afternoon from the school. And in the, I've noticed at the middle school, primarily in the high school, that the morning absent report comes out, and by the afternoon, it's corrected. So if there were twenty-nine students absent in the morning, that total might go down to nine absent and twenty excused by the afternoon, that I'm noticing at Thompson, but Rogers, the numbers stay flat. So if it says twenty-nine in the morning, it's still twenty-nine in the afternoon. Sometimes it goes up and down, you know, they were there, not there in the morning, but there in the afternoon, I understand that. But my question is, do we know why, or could we next month get a report on the strategy or the reason why, why is that happening at the middle school that you see the numbers go from excused to unexcused? Well, I'm sorry, unexcused to excused, as opposed to the high school that it doesn't seem to move?
Phone calls.
Correct, correct. So the, you are correct on that. At the high school level, as far as the follow-up and the personal phone calls, they've just started to initiate, they've already, each specific, the principal, dean, assistant principal, and I believe they have two other people that are part of the Sea Tree Initiative, they are participating in making personal phone calls. They've already identified the students that have missed four or more days of school, and they have a group of students that they're calling. As far as the attendance in the afternoon, it takes sometimes literally till the end of school for the clerk to get all the information in and get it adjusted accordingly. So they're trying to improve upon that. The middle school, again, the, I think age has a lot to do with it as well. The middle school usually can reach an adult that can give a reason, or they can know the whereabouts of where the student is. We've had more difficulty at the high school level locating an adult, or trying to speak to someone personally about why a child is not in school. So I think that's part of the reason, too. Middle school, hands down, has a better, I'll say, system that they've been using for a while. I think the high school is a different level, and they have different challenges than the middle school, so it's a little bit harder to track down the kids. But I can get a report for you.
That'd be great, because I think there's a correlation between what Mrs. Bowlen said earlier. I think the kids that are leaving, if you find out why they're not there and somebody tells you, it's easier to identify it is a class, or they don't like this, or they don't like that. But I think it would help, I think it would help all of the causes if, if we had that more personal interaction, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
No, that's okay. As someone who works directly with the homeless population in our city, I'm kind of disappointed that every time that we have this meeting and they have the homeless reports, nothing is said to the general public on the amount of children who are homeless within the school department. And also, how does that correlate with the chronic absentees? Because how many of these children who are absent are due because they have no home, and they may not be here on the island, or able to get to school, because they might be sleeping on someone's couch, say, in Fall River or New Beaufort, and no transportation? So I'm just wondering how that correlates with the, the chronic absentees?
Right. Our, our homeless children actually do have good attendance.
Do they?
Yes, we do have, because as far as, we do have busing that is specifically provided through McKinney Vinto, and.
Are those for only children that are in group home settings?
No.
Or are these like, sleeping in their car or in tent homeless?
Well, if we know their whereabouts, we get to them. And I'll also call it, sometimes people call it couch surfing, or if they're going from house to house. Usually, we are able to find a way of getting them to school. And I have to say, our family service coordinators have been very good about helping us to find the transportation, as well as Dr. Bean, as far as doing that. But the more information we can receive, the better, so we can get them in school.
Right. I mean, I, I know we're at, what, sixty-four percent at or below poverty level of our student body, and also with the homelessness, I think a lot of that probably does play into the chronic absentees. You have single-parent families, a lot of times, the high school kids have to watch their younger siblings, and by the time the morning comes, if it's the third shift or second shift job, these kids aren't gonna go up and, get up and go to school. And I think that has, I don't think these kids are just skipping for no reason. You really have to look into their family structure, and not everyone has the same family structure. And when you don't have diversity, like, I understand the crew program sounds excellent, but if there's no diversity within the crew members who are trying to monitor, mentor these children, or any kind of diversity within the administration to understand what a lot of children who live in poverty go through, it's really hard not to understand why there's chronic absentees. A lot of children can't go to the doctor because they can't afford to go to the doctor. So if they're out three, four days because they're sick and don't have a doctor's note to come back, it takes longer for them to come back. So I, I know a lot of these are probably things that are factored in. I'm just from the general public, and like I said, I work daily with the homeless in the city, and I understand how adults can't hold jobs and go to jobs when they're homeless. I can only imagine how hard it is for children who are homeless to be able to attend school every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mrs. Bryant, just so you know that, and I'm sure you're aware, all of these are, are back on the website for the public to view after our meeting.
Okay.
So once we accept them.
Right.
If you go back on to Board Docs and you look at our meeting or through the school website, you'll see all these reports.
Yeah, I remember, like, previously, I thought there was like, a percentage that was given out, but then it was, it seems to be, to be glanced over, so I, I didn't know if we just stopped giving out the percentage at the meetings, or if it's, you know.
No, so I think they're available, they're available once the meeting is over, so you can go on, well, tomorrow, they, they don't put them out tonight, but.
They are available after, after we accept them for the public to view.
So the, on the motion, eight, to accept eight point three through eight point seven, it's been seconded and made, seeing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Now on to section nine, which is meeting dates and agenda items, and the, we have, excuse me? Uh, well, it's on, we don't have the date yet, but that won't be posted, that'll be posted. But we have, so far, we have October twenty-sixth is a wellness subcommittee meeting at nine-thirty, NACTEC room nine hundred. October thirtieth is a school building subcommittee meeting at five-thirty in the NACTEC room nine hundred. And November thirteenth is the next regular school committee meeting, six-thirty here at Pell School. I know there's a policy one in the works that'll be posted down the line, and I know.
What's the thirtieth?
Excuse me?
What's happening the thirtieth?
School building.
October thirtieth is a school building subcommittee at five-thirty.
There's a fundraiser. The mayor's.
And the nineteenth is, October, is the policy.
Okay, and it's tentatively, the October nineteenth will be a policy subcommittee meeting at, in the NACTEC building at Rogers at nine-thirty.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Collins.
Thank you. Is there any need for, is there a need for an executive session this evening?
No.
No, there's no need for executive session this evening. So on the meetings, and I know that we've. We did do policy. Seeing, seeing no other questions, a motion to adjourn made by Mrs. Sylvia. Seconded by Dr. Flowers. Any discussion, questions, and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned.